I'll call to order the first work session for 2013. I trust everyone had a good and healthy new year, and we're ready to get down to business. Was that an "I"?
Hi.
The first item on the agenda is a Charter Resolution Number 160. A resolution to amend the Charter of the City of Laurel by adding new language to Section 353 of the Charter entitled "General Powers" to provide that the mayor may be -- may by executive order create necessary or beneficial policies for the operation of the city government so long as such policies comply with the city charter and city code as amended from time to time. Mr. Manzi?
Let me -- I do this by.
Mayor, okay.
Thank you. The -- thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things, and then Mr. Manzi may have others. I wanted to first thank the council. I had the opportunity to talk to each of the council members regarding this. Regarding this executive order, as you know, when we talked about it last time, we kept it in as a supermajority. There were some concerns from some of the council that majority is what they'd rather see. We talked about it, told them my view on why I thought it was important to have the supermajority. I think this also gives us opportunity -- we have done some executive orders prior. This also gives us an opportunity to really spell out how far you can go with this with an executive order, no matter who the mayor is and whoever the council is. It also adds a portion in there that allows the council to have review and call it up if they disagree with that within a timeline. And I want to thank Marty in particular. I think Marty and who else? Marty, was it just you guys that really did a lot of investigating from other municipalities? I know Bob did as well. So I just wanted to point that out, and hopefully we'll continue with the supermajority on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manzi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Basically, as I explained the last time this came up, this is already being done, but it's not being done by executive order. This is a policy that the mayor makes policy. What we're trying to --
Administrative.
Administrative policy, you're correct, Mayor. What we're trying to do here is to set up an orderly fashion for policies to be made, number one. Number two, to provide that these policies do have -- are made known to the council, okay? And number three, to allow the council to review them. So right now, that is not true of administrative policies unless the council would hear of one and want to review it. So what we're doing by making this change is we're actually creating a system which I think is better than what we have now. It allows more input all the way along the line, and that was the purpose of doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Manzi. I'll open the table up for comments and questions, starting with Councilman Les.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I indicated last time, I pretty much said it all last time. I appreciate the opportunity to hold this over till this work session so I could digest it three or four times during the holidays. And I think I'm fine with this as it is and let it go forward. And as anything else we do, if it's not the right thing, we'll change it. But again, let's go forward with it so as Mr. Manzi would say we've got a documented process in place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Councilwoman McQuarrie?
Thank you. I too had a lot of, I'll call them fears of the unknown. I still have a lot of fears of the unknown, but a lot of the ones I had before have been wiped out now, so that's a very good thing. But I think in this business, as we try for perfection, we always notice imperfection, and all we can do is keep trying. So I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ricks?
I too have had some conversations with council members and other people. And as we all know, the mayor has always done executive orders. So I mean, it's nothing new to the system, and I think ratifying it in this particular way is fine. And I am fine with this, a reasonable regular vote, and I don't see any reason for even a supermajority, in my mind.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Nicholas?
Yeah, I read it, and I'm fine with it.
You know, I think with any good piece of legislation, there always is going to be the exchange back and forth, and in the end, hopefully, there's something that comes out of it is going to be something that's solid and going to be beneficial. So I support it as well. So we're okay to put this on our agenda and introduce it at the Maryland City Council meeting on Monday the 14th?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Agenda Item Two is Ordinance Number 1756, text amendment Number 228, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20 Land Development Subdivision, Article One, Zoning, Division Two, Administration and Enforcement of the Laurel City Code, Providing an Effective Date.
Good evening, Mr. Brock.
Could I make one -- point out one thing? Anybody that has telephones on, if they're on, please put them all vibrate. If not, it'll cost you five bucks if they go off, and we'll give it to a nonprofit organization. Give us five dollars. Sorry, couldn't resist. You're wrong. They said that could be first executive order.
Jack?
Mr. President, the text amendment before you is an amendment to the Unified Land Development Code Administration and Enforcement section. This has been reviewed by the Planning Commission and is recommended for approval. This is an enforcement action that would enable the Director of Community Planning and Business Services to suspend or revoke a commercial use and occupancy permit if in any -- if any premise will be commercial premise is a subject of three or more police calls within three days, on three separate days, on any 90-day period. And it further defines the illegal activity would be conduct in violation of any federal or state law defining a felony or misdemeanor or a municipal code. That's it.
That's it? Okay. Council, we'll start with Councilwoman Nicholas. Any questions or comments?
Can you come back to me?
You get one shot at the apple. Yes, I can. Councilwoman Ricks?
The right.
Okay. Councilwoman McQuarrie?
What process would they have to be heard on this?
They would have a -- they have a right, they would have a right, as with anything, to appeal to the Board of Appeals because it's an administrative order of the --
Correct.
Director.
The three municipal codes could be very minor.
Yes. Well, if you read on, it says a case report documenting the illegal activity would have to be filed, an enforcement action against a tenant or a person associated with the premises. Illegal activity would have to happen. So it's a little more than just a complaint where the police come out, don't find anything, or they come out and they say, okay, break it up and leave. You know, they'd have to file a report and do much more than that, so.
It was B that was concerning me.
Yeah, right, I understand. But if you read B with the end of A, I think it --
Someplace to be heard.
Yeah, right. And they do have someplace to be heard, so.
There will be an internal procedure as how this is to be administered.
Okay.
That is the intent.
Councilman Les?
Let me just clarify, so when I look through this --
Turn the mic on, Mike.
I'm sorry. I apologize. This does not include municipal infraction, the way I read it, because the way this is set up now, it has to have a police call with a police report, correct?
Correct, but it could be the police department is also authorized to write municipal infractions.
Right. Let me just say my concern.
Typical municipal infraction would be probably noise ordinance.
No, you didn't cut your grass. Two, three weeks now, you didn't cut your grass.
No. It doesn't cover residential property.
I know what it means, and I think everybody at this table knows.
This is only commercial property.
That's -- okay. All right, okay, just want to make sure.
And it's still an issue, but which is why we will make sure that something is in writing.
Yeah, there's a process.
Exactly.
You all will reveal before we do.
Okay, good. All right, I'm fine. I'm fine, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Les. And counsel, just for your information, as Mr. Brock pointed out, this was discussed to some detail of the Planning Commission, and after a fair amount of discussion, the commission was okay with the language of this as well. So we're okay to have it on our agenda from Monday the 17th? Ah, 14th, I'm sorry. Thank you. Agenda Item Three, Ordinance Number 1762, an ordinance to authorize the city to issue up to $15,500,000 of tax increment financing special obligation bonds for the Town Center at Laurel. Anyone?
I can do it.
Okay.
We'll have bond counsel here with us on Monday, but as you remember, bond counsel was here both for the work session and the last meeting, and explained that this is the bonding authority that we have for assistance for public improvements to the mall property. It will be -- the TIF bonds are not pledging the full faith and credit of the city. They are based solely upon the tax increment that is going to be paid by the property. One of the things that you have to understand is that the value of the property as of, I guess it'll be this past January, not this January, but January a year ago, whatever the tax was at that time, we will continue to collect that at the very least. So we're not losing anything from the standpoint of we didn't have, you know, we don't -- that's all we had, that's all we were getting anyway. And then we will get a percentage, I think it's 30% of the tax increment, 70% will go for the bonds. So we're still getting 30% of the value of the buildings as they go up. And the way the Assessment Office takes care of these is they do quarterly dates of finality. So they will come out and assess and reassess the center on a quarterly basis as it, as buildings are added. So as buildings are added, the assessment will go up, and obviously, our share of it will go up, so.
Amusement taxes, I like to hear, I don't have any.
What's it? Oh, and very importantly, with the movie theaters, there's a 10% amusement tax. That is not included. That will continue to come to us, less what the state charges us for an administrative fee.
Okay. Ms. Silver, you want to add anything?
One second.
No, just in case you have questions.
Okay. Counsel?
Fine.
It's fine.
I've had plenty of time to not only think about what we talked about in our other sessions, but to totally understand what we're doing here, and I totally agree with it, and it makes only the best sense in the world to move forward.
Excellent. Councilman Les?
It's important to note, Bob, that the county's participating in this.
Yes, they are. They are.
So it's both the county and the city?
Right. $5 million of the 15-5 will be a -- it's a county grant. I forget what they call their program.
They're handling it a little bit differently.
Pilot program.
Pilot program. I'm good. I'm fine with it, man. I'm just, President.
Thank you, Councilman. And counsel, as you remember, this was introduced on our December 10, 2012 meeting, and our second public hearing will be at the 14th Council Meeting. Agenda Item Four is a Resolution Number 16-12, a resolution to designate a tax increment financing district and create a special fund for the Town Center at Laurel. This too was introduced on December 10, 2012, and our second public hearing will be heard on January 14.
Nothing new?
Nothing, nothing new?
I think we added it.
Okay.
Put it on here just to make sure you're dynamic.
Okay. So since there are no counsel, any comments, questions regarding this? Okay. We'll move on to Agenda Item Five, Revitalization Overlay Application for 100 Main Street and the Patriot Group.
Mr. President, let me just just know, I work for Maryland Transit Administration. I'm going to recuse myself and remove myself from the room during this discussion. As you know, all the, any transactions that occur between the city and MTA are handled by the council president, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Brendel?
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, I thought to condense this and let you absorb a lot of these things without hearing me drone on for half an hour. We would do this visually, so you can, I'll describe this as we go along. This PowerPoint was provided courtesy of Mr. Ricciardi of Patriot Realty. And council will be getting copy of all the staff reports that you see this evening, probably tomorrow morning, when we were just finished. Getting through these has been quite an ordeal, but we made it. Anyway, to this, this seems to me like old business because we've been dealing with this for a long time. Very happy, Mr. Dell Adams from the Maryland Department of Transportation is here with us this evening, and his associate. We've really been dealing with this for seven, eight, sometime. So they're very close to concluding their business affairs and moving ahead with this project. This particular project is a transit-oriented development. It's in an overlay zone that's specifically intended for transit-oriented development. This site is designated by the governor as a smart site, and it's also the epicenter of our BRAC enhancement zone. So more labels it couldn't have with that. So let me just go ahead quickly. As you know the subject site too well, the parking lot that is now on the west side of the building will be taken up by a multi-floor building, almost in its entirety. And I'll get into the details of that because we have building diagrams, et cetera, et cetera. As you can see, the relationship to this particular project, it's right on Main Street and more so heavily on Route One. The difference will be, and I'll show you a picture of it, is there, and your first question would be the displacement of commuters that now use this lot. This is one of those heavily-used marked stations on the Camden Line, and there will be a new multi-level parking garage built across the tracks next to, the only way, I still call it Donny Danaman's Auto Service, on state land that is owned on the other side of the tracks. And again, this is just the, I'd also note, and I'm not going to get into it tonight, is that the, this particular location is in very close proximity to another project in Howard County that we've talked about, which is just up the thing. This is a contextual view, contextual view of the existing train station. As you know, it's in the National Register of Historic Places, and the particular intersection here, we have a, this used to be a home of a hardware store and a lumberyard, and obviously, it's been blank for a number of years from marked parking lot. One of the most important things when we talked about this project was how to save the scale of the Laurel Historic Train Station. And one of the things to do is that we, the developers agreed to do, and that is to set back the structure from the, from Main Street and then to, from a four-story section, and then in the center core into a six-story section. And then one of the requirements that we're recommending that be approved is that the applicant uplight the train station at night and be responsible for its perpetual lighting at night, so it has a presence in the evening hours. What we're looking at is 310 multifamily apartments, and one of the things we had discussed for some time was there, there's now 10,000 square feet of commercial space on it. This is just a, showing the units as they come across, and I'll be more detailed. This is the bulk and scale of the structure. Again, it's set back. There is a center courtyard, which I'll show you in just a second, but this is looking at it from the corner of Second Street and Route One. The train station is directly to your left. And just another view. The residential lobby is right at the corner of the street. There is a parking garage, and I'll get into transportation in just a second. There is a multi, a double-level parking garage on the structure of this building. Keep in mind that it's not meant for marked commuter rail parkers. It is meant for people who live and work in this building. There, again, with 10,000 square feet of commercial space, the applicant is working with MDOT, with some retail brokers now to look at filling that space. That space is currently facing Main Street to continue that line of businesses up the street. These are the two parking levels. The first level, which is the slide to your right, which I hopefully won't take there, we're offering, recommending that the applicant have an option. The apartment units in the gray, we're recommending that the applicant have the option of using this either as residential units or as office units because they directly face Second Street, and they are at the ground level. But again, that's in the recommendations. And as you can see from this vantage point, there is a central courtyard with the applicant plans, obviously some recreational amenities. And as you remember, this particular applicant is also the developer of Hawthorne Place, so they'll be working with Mr. Lotzky, assuming the conceptual plan moves forward, with recreational amenities that are, that suit this particular environment. This is meant primarily for people who ride the train, but we have to remember that most of the people that live in this building will probably not use the train, but just like the amenities of being on Main Street, it's good for the street. It's good for a number of people, brings the incomes into the street. Only when you get into situations like Manhattan, or even in downtown Bethesda, do you get a 50% transit usage, and we've estimated this to be 20 at best, which is good in a way because it allows other uses in the building, because the folks that work in the building, that live in the building, drive during the day. And like, I did that in a smaller sense at Patuxent Place when I lived there. My space was used many times over during the day. So this is the cross, this is looking cross-sectionally at the project. And again, you see that four-story, the six-story setback, the center courtyard, and unfortunately, cannot be enjoyed by the public at large unless you go into the building. It shows a schematic of the parking levels. One of the, and then this is the vision of the parking garage that would be located next to Danaman's Auto Service on Lafayette Avenue. Now, having said that, I'm going to --
How big cars?
In the garage? I didn't bring that with me. It's probably around the onsite garage.
For the living room?
Yes.
About 310.
310, yeah. There's at least, which is pretty healthy for --
How many?
310. It's at least one per unit. A lot of people, the whole point of TODs is to attract people, and the Planning Commission will also see this with the other, what I call the sister development at the Laurel Police Department on Tuesday evening, is a lot of people don't want to necessarily have cars. We have not recommended a zip car for this particular facility because there is a stronger presence of transit here, likelihood of cabs, and then obviously, the train station itself. But I wanted to talk very briefly, that was the picture, is I want to talk briefly about circulation. One of the things that we were in somewhat of an impasse with a developer for, for a long time, and that is, so they understand the dynamic that for all of us who have been to the train station, when a train comes in, we know what pain is. It's a very short-lived pain, but it's a pain. So we're looking at ways to try to fully understand that, because there's a lot of things happening in this dynamic now aside from the station, and that is, you know, building another facility, which is, you know, unofficial in Howard County. A lot of people that use the station are from North Laurel, but that we can't assume anything about where they'll go in the future, so we don't. But what the dynamic, we are concerned in talking to the developer about, and they have done a revised traffic study, which you'll get an excerpt when you get your staff report of the first few pages, is whether they will, how they will come to and exit the parking garage, because as you well know, the queue underneath the underpass doesn't take long to block up now, and then if you have this concentrated amount of movement, the question is, how will they go? And then I said, well, if I was in line at the parking garage looking, and I lived in Howard County, I would exit the garage, go down all the way down First Street to Laurel Avenue, and then loop around, because it would be a small price to pay for sitting in traffic, because we have to be very mindful of how people leave here. So we want to study it and ask for more information. The other part about it is in this garage itself, I hope he came back enough. No, he didn't. Hold on. In the garage itself, we have asked the applicant, our recommendation is, do the applicant have an electronic system that bans egress from the Main Street entrance to this garage during peak hours that would be identified by the city, or by MTA, or by MDOT, so that they, I cannot imagine someone trying to egress this garage when a train has come in, because it's bad enough when people go to the Route One light. And this all, I mean, the timing of those lights, of all the lights in the area will be, will be studied further between the conceptual plan and the final plan. But I can't imagine them, talk about don't block the box. The capacity there is bad enough as it is, because obviously, the light favors the Second Street, you know, the movement into Howard County, so that's another thing we'll be studying before we do this any further. But as such, though, I mean, obviously, this is a big improvement. Every time they submit something, it's a big improvement, so I believe that this warrants a conceptual approval. We have a number of conditions on this, including the ones I just mentioned, about making sure that it's electronic system, which, you know, they've said is not a problem. And there may be times when it's, you know, we just have to make sure people just, because when people wait too long, they'll just come out. But again, all I noticed when I watched trains comes in is the traffic backs up. It's amazing it doesn't back under the underpass, but somehow, it queues it out, and they have tried to verify that. But really, that, that's my summation of where we're at today. Again, you'll have the complete staff report with all the documentation, and the, at least the partial draft traffic analysis. I think it's very positive. It's also also nice that this particular developer is also the developer of Hawthorne Place, and there are a number of off-site traffic improvements scheduled to that, because one of the ones that I have a particular concern about is the intersection of Bowie Road and Lafayette Avenue, right at the rescue squad. You know, you cannot make a left turn there because you're coming out, you know, no sight distance, so there's going to have to be some kind of signalization improvement there, and it'll be determined like where that comes from in the future. There was also tremendous concern during Hawthorne, and it continues, about pedestrian movement. We have a large number of the city's Latino population living east of the tracks. They're walking into the shopping center over there, and we don't want anybody winged, you know? And it does, it has the, the Main Street underpass is a little bit more positive, but the one down there does not. But anyway, we're trying to look at the whole grid of this thing, because again, we're not, since you're moving a dynamic of people that park on this side of the road to the other side of the road, I think it's, you know, I'd like to assume that a professional knows exactly what, how to happen, but I think we have to adopt a wait-and-see when in terms of fine-tuning a lot of the execute to this thing. But I think, I think, I mean, it's very positive. We need to have an aggressive thing right here at Main Street and Route One. It's the gateway to Howard County, as I mentioned. There's a very large project that's three or four times the size, 1,000 feet away, and that's something, you know, so that's our TOD reality as it is. What it does is puts pressure on the Camden Line for additional service, which is good, and the state, a number of the state people have been active in trying to advocate for the Camden Line, the Camden, Mark Camden Alliance, to try to get more traffic on this particular line, because, you know, if no one speaks for Camden, it, you know, Penn doesn't, neither does Brunswick's. So we do have an advocacy group that is trying for more service, which will enhance the viability of this project. And with all that said, I ask you if you have any questions?
Okay. Counsel, we'll start with, Councilwoman Ricks, you want to continue your line of questions?
Currently, do we know how many people park down there now?
Yes. I don't have it with me, but yes.
Do we know?
Well, there's different classes of people. There's people who park at the Legion. There's people who start, people don't realize that the state --
I'm wondering, how much of this 300 that we're talking about will be swallowed up by the garage, and how many people will be looking for parking lots?
Well, one of our recommended, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this. One of our recommended conditions is the applicant must show us, and probably MDOT, a displacement plan of where to put everybody while this is happening. There can be, oh, oops, we'll see you in two years, kind of thing. Why don't you answer the council? Yeah, no, go right ahead. This is Mr. Adams of MDOT.
Is it all between?
No, just put it forward to the green light comes on. Push the little tab front, towards you.
We're on TV, Mr. Adams, so --
Oh, you can tell me.
We want everyone, yes, absolutely.
Can you hear me now?
Whoops.
It's a one-for-one replacement. It's a one-for-one replacement of all the existing parking on the main lot, which is where the main building will go, in addition to the spaces that are actually on the area where the garage will be located. So it's a one-for-one replacement, and I believe we added in a small percentage of growth as well. The American Legion lot will remain, and that will be leased.
Will this be a pain facility?
No.
No?
No. That is something we're looking at for the future.
Will it be swallowed up by the Bears?
Exactly. Exactly. Exactly.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I would say is that based on conversations you and I have had, I'd like, I have to delay this, but see that the Public Safety Committee will take a look and just acquiesce in what's been done, like-
Very good, I agree.
Be happy to, to come to it. We're scheduled to go to ESC on the 23rd of this month, I'll be happy to come to your meeting as well.
Great. Councilman Les?
I mean, this is the, what, fourth iteration, you're saying?
At least.
About fourth, Chris? Okay, so I, the, um, I mean, there's a lot of hurdles to overcome here. I'm sorry.
Lot of hurdles to overcome, I'm sure the developer will do that. Um, the, the water will have to be maintained, they'll have to meet the 100% rule, I believe, on the property for stormwater management, which doesn't exist now. Just adds to everything's flowing downstream, so that's good. Um, the, the fact that we'll build a structured parking facility over in the other lot's good, um, and that we'll continue with the lease, that they will, somebody will continue with the lease of the Legion property, that's also good. So it's all good.
Mm-huh.
And it, um, as you said, it gets better every time it comes back. I mean, one, one iteration wasn't that good-looking, this is actually getting better-looking. You know, this has to come to the HDC, I believe, is that correct?
It does, I-
As a courtesy.
Huh? I'm sorry, what'd you say, Carl?
As a courtesy.
Let me just say this, it, it's courtesy or not courtesy, what you don't want, I don't think you want the HDC up in arms against this guy.
No, not at all.
So it's important to come to the HDC and that we get, uh, buy-in from the HDC.
I believe Mr. Manzi might be better off answering my, your question than I do.
Well, again, I, I think Bob knows what I'm saying, we need to get buy-in from the HDC that this is the right thing for this place in a, in the historic Main Street area, that's all.
Well, I, I think, I think what Carl means by a courtesy review is the fact that the property is not owned by a agency that's subject to-
We understand that, but again, just-
Yeah, but certainly, you know, we have always suggested to any applicant that they come before the Historic District Commission to get the input of the Historic District Commission on this, and I think this is no different. We've been, we've been there before on this project.
Right, and the post office came to the Historic District Commission-
Yep, they certainly did.
And they got the buy-in from the Historic District Commission.
Right.
Modern building on, on the Warren property, so again, I, it's important, because they're an important part of the community too, so-
Yes, no question.
And I'm sure that MDOT and the developers want to do that. Okay, that's the only concern I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Councilman McRae?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think what you said initially, Carl, was, we're proving conceptually of this initial, these initial drawings, we aren't getting into the details yet.
You're, and I, I'm not using the words bulk and scale, but you're approving the vision that you're seeing in front of you, you're not really talking about the, the color of the brick and the lamp fixtures and things like that.
Correct, and I do believe this, this rendering is actually quite good, um, as opposed to, uh, past. It's a marked improvement, and additionally too, it's always important that what we have that isn't environmentally up, up to code, um-
Used.
-is improved, and I think certainly below the train station, certainly could, um, use a lot of improvements, so with all that said, I think it's good to go.
Very good. Councilwoman Nicholas?
Just for clarity, could you please go back to the slide that shows the underground parking?
Certainly.
Okay, so this parking is basically for the building, it has nothing to do with-
It's exclusively for the building.
With the building, so there's gonna be a separate parking area for mark train riders?
Yeah, this is the garage. Now, this structure is across the tracks.
Okay.
If you go underneath the underpass and turn sharply to your right, this will be on your left, because a lot of people don't realize the state owns the land for Mr. Daniman's, almost all the way down in the front of Mr. Frederick's door of his auto body shop.
Okay.
It's, is public land.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify the two, that there was separate parking. Thank you.
I think, uh, among the pluses that Councilman Les was talking about, um, certainly improved traffic, uh, flow, and, and that's, that's a big hurdle as well as, uh, pedestrian flow, uh, as, as Carl mentioned. Um, and then the, the other piece is the hope, uh, as you mentioned, Carl, about the, uh, the Camden Line and service, uh, on that, although I think that's, uh, a very ambitious hope to, uh, but I think it's, it's certainly something that, uh, the alliance, uh, will embrace and, and pursue. So we're good to go then, um-
Well, Mr. President, I, I would submit to you that, that by testimony we received tonight, that it's a one-for-one parking, so there, there shouldn't be anything that's going to be drastically different than what exists today.
Right.
And I think all we can do is by the Public Safety Committee and the rest of the council and the HCC and so forth, all we can do is take a look at what's being done and make our best effort to make sure that it continues to flow the way it does now. When the trains come into town now, there is just a little bit of time, a small 10, 15 minutes, where traffic lines up and people move out. Aside from that, for the record, there is no more congestion down there, and I don't expect any more congestion down there than what we see right now.
I agree.
And I see that to be minimal, and in the best interest of the city to move forward.
Right. Ms. McCullough?
Uh, just a general comment on, uh, a lot of the concerns that deal with traffic. We have, even within my shop, we have the simulation software, and as we get the actual, uh, we can take counts, determine exactly how many vehicles are going in different directions now, we can plug these into the simulation models, and based on what we, we see where there are, are backups, we can modify the intervals on some of the traffic signals so that we can come up with probably the optimal type of timing. It may mean we would stop a little bit of traffic going north on, on Route 1 and allow a little bit more traffic to get through. And in the, of, of doing the simulation studies, I think we can come out with a pretty good, a pretty good plan. We can look at all the various routes in and out of, of that area and come up with what works best for it. And, and we can make some improvements over what we're doing now.
Right, that's right. Okay, so just for clarity, Ms. Mills, are the next step?
Introduction of an ordinance next Monday evening.
Okay.
And it is on the Planning Commission docket for Tuesday evening.
Excellent, okay, thank you. And, uh, catch your breath, Mr. Brendel. Uh, Agenda Item 6 is the conceptual MXT West Side.
This is actually two applications, but I'm quasi-merging them, um, because they're, they're interrelated, to say the very, very, very least. Council will remember the annexation, the second annexation in 2012, which became effective right around Labor Day, and that was when the city annexed the strip matter property, and that, at the time, that was, was, uh, owned by the Prince George's County Board of Education. You'll remember that, thanks Brian. Um, let me go to this. If you remember this, this was the, one of the annexation exhibits, the, the original strip matter property is on your left, and then the school board property has the little hook and handle on the right. And if you remember the annexation drawings we had at the time, the strip matter property used to be quite a bit larger, like at least 25 acres larger at the si-, at the time, but the state took an enormous amount of land from the strip matter people, well over 25 acres if I'm not mistaken. And one of the strange things that happened with this particular property is that because of the scale of the transportation improvements associated with Conterra Town Center East, and because of the scale of all the other things that were going on, among them, Van Duzen Road feeding into what's now Virginia Manor Road, which will become Kennerworth Avenue, Conti Road realigned, et cetera, et cetera, the only place that the state could access the strip matter property was in another property off it, the, the side of the property completely. So it was the state mandate that interfered. Now, having said that, back in 2010, when the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission produced the Subregion 1 Plan, it made a comment that, to the Board of Education property, that someone wanted to buy it, they wanted to trade it with other space that could be used for active recreation. That's all, that's an admirable thing, but it didn't happen that way. And in zoning venues, when you, the premise that you make doesn't turn out to be true, it's called a mistake. Now, when you use MXT zoning, you don't have to prove mistake or change, but there's enough mistake to go around for everybody on this one. Um, so we've looked at this very, very carefully from 100 different ways, but the bottom line is, and for those of you, uh, President Smalls and the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission's already been asked by the state and has recorded the access point, which is, I have my brand-new pointer, I'm not using it, hello, uh, right here is where it said, the state said, "The only way you're gonna access one square inch of anything here is to that point there." And the city said, "Okay, that's fine, but," and the, the, you have to understand that the strip matter property was already zoned MXT by Prince George's County in the last section of map amendment. This, when the city annexed this, if the council will remember, this was zoned ROS because it was owned by the Board of Education, okay? And when the city annexed this property, it rezoned it into the IP of the public institutional space, because as you remember, when you annex land in the state, you can zone it to more than 50% of the original zoning of the property, um, at the time, even though that violates Maryland planning laws, but that's a whole nother story I won't get into tonight. Um, so the Planning Commission has already allowed the dedication of the right-of-way, of what we call West Side Boulevard, which comes up along here and then goes in at this point. Now, what we have tonight is the, the initial application of the strip matter property to have a conceptual MXT and the rezoning of the property of the, the former Board of Education from IP to MXT. Unfortunately, it can't absorb that into the, the bubble plan, but they can do it soon after the council chooses to annex, to, excuse me, rezone the property. Now, again, that is subject to the five-year rule, just as anything else is, but that's something the city will simply refer to the county, um, to handle one way or the other. This is the, I'm sorry, this doesn't come everywhere, this is a conceptual illustrative plan only. This is, is, is not an official plan, but what the, what the, uh, the bubble plan is that we're asking you to consider is this, that the tan area is an area of a gated apartment community that contains up to 500 units. The lime area, the large lime area, is where there'd be potential future townhouses. The purple area is a mid-rise hotel, and the, I don't know what you call that salmon, is up to 200,000 square feet of retail. Um, this is a, an MXT that combines a little bit of everything, so it has everything, and it also has a, um, a buffer area. Now, they have been working very carefully with Mr. Lotzky in the Parks and Recreation Plan, but in the concept, that need not be finalized. Um, there are a number of issues. This also is going for the Emergency Services Commission on the 23rd. But again, this is, this, uh, I guess that's lavender, that's West Side Boulevard, this is actually a traffic circle through here. Let me see if I've any other, tried to... The, the administration was very concerned, because despite the fact that we begged, and the applicant begged, the residents of Wilshire Estates to be aware of this, we did it during the annexation, we also did it, and the applicant did it during this process as well, and no one from Wilshire Estates seems to be interested. However, be that as it may, if you see the, the houses that are on this particular thing, these are single-family homes in Wilshire Estates that exist. This is West Side Boulevard, which would be, uh, obviously a tree Boulevard with a tree median in it. But even as such, what we've asked for preliminarily is this buffer area that would occur between the Wilshire House and the property line, and allow this to be screened of, by having Birmingham here. They may not be part of the city, but that doesn't mean the city's gonna be not responsible and sensitive to their needs as well. So, again, what we have here, but, um, going back to the, uh, to the rezoning request, um, there are a number of comments that I've made in the staff report, which I won't repeat tonight, just for not to be too lengthy. But again, it was the, what the state did, just to reiterate, the Board of Ed property was seized by the, well, seized, it was taken by the state for public purpose, because what it did was try to compensate the strip matters for having 25 acres of their property taken, which had just been zoned by Prince George's County to MXT, so it was seized. And as you well know, zoning adds value to land, and that, that was worth something. So the state is negotiating to have the strip matters absorb that, so the purpose of the MXT is also to prove the fact that if you, no simple arithmetic, if you take away 25 acres of MXT and you put it back, there was no net gain in MXT zoning in Subregion 1. It's a wash. If anything, it's actually slightly diminished, because the school board property is 19 acres. So we're using, again, uh, uh, this is not, it's not a blame game, we're saying, whenever in zoning, when you make presumptions based on certain things happening and they don't happen, it's just considered a mistake in the original zoning of the property. And even though it's not required in an MXT, we still consider it to be more than compelling, because to keep this as an open space and hope it'd be used for active recreation, it's no longer owned by a public entity, and that was the presumption of the master plan, which makes the master plan also an error, or outdated if nothing else. So again, this applicant, the, the Board of Ed property, as you've seen on the bubble plan, makes far more sense of being part of an integrated development that would rest here, because you can see the, the road network in a lot of the drawings, the road work, network around this is massive, and I will tell you that there are certain discussions, and one of our recommendations is that, that the city was contacted by the Park and Planning Commission saying, "You didn't factor in Conterra traffic into this," and, and what we're basically saying is, "Yes, we didn't, because we don't really know anything about Conterra traffic, because the city was not part of the, any discussions about their APF, the road system improvement between MDOT and the, and, excuse me, State Highway Administration and the developer, um, so how could we possibly know?" So our recommendation is the council asks, between, assuming you would approve this, ask the Park and Planning Commission, for example, to come out and brief the city council and the Planning Commission on just what exactly the Conterra plan is, because we truly don't know, so we can't make assumptions about things we don't know. And a lot of it is predicated on things moving forward. It's not a criticism, it's just one of those, you know, "They had a party and didn't invite us," so now we're inviting them to come, and to know, but that's not to say that the city is sovereign, and Bob Manzi will, will tell you that, is, the, the city councils and the mayor of the city have always taken serious account of anything regionally, and they're not about to ignore these things, but they're also gonna ignore the, and I'm gonna say it out loud, the reality is, I've been waiting 25 years, and I see dirt moving now, which is optimistic, and I'm excited about that, but, um, I'm not so sure that the city needs to wait to see what happens. I'll, I'll leave it at that. So anyway, that's one of our recommendations to you in the staff report, um, that you will see, um, tomorrow. Again, rest, most of this stuff is conditional, as in MXT, the final plan moves on to the Planning Commission whenever it's ready. There's still a number of things to be done, um, they have to submit a fiscal impact plan, just as all of our applications do. But the biggest thing is, I think it's important for everybody, all the neighbors, to understand the transportation network that was approved by the county, so I think it's beholding to the county to come up and fill us in. So that's our biggest recommendation on this.
Okay, I agree. Councilman Les, comments?
Um, we just covered it. First of all, uh, the city council and the mayor, uh, different faces at the table in, we advocated for the relocation of Kennerworth Avenue Extended, because we said it should feed into Conti Road interchange, as opposed to end, going through Van Duzen Road, that would've been a disaster. So what's happened here is, we got agreement, you know, we got, got agreement with that, and the difficulty is that Kennerworth Avenue Extended, God only knows what's gonna happen to that now, but the Kennerworth, the, uh, Conti Road interchange is being built, and the road is sweeping around to intersect with that, correct?
That's-
Okay, so that's a success, and it impacted this property. Um, what, what we need to realize is, and I think Carl has so aptly stated it, all we have seen- all we have seen, and again, I appreciate what Tate from Conterra.
Tom Strong.
Yeah, Tate Armstrong. We were at a briefing for the hospital, myself and Mr. Smalls, President Smalls. And we got a good presentation. There's a lot of things missing out of their plan, though, because I don't think they know exactly where they are yet.
No, they don't. Didn't get that impression.
You know, they're still sort of trying to feel their way across the street, and that's where it is, it's across the street. So it's unclear to me how they're going to get traffic on and off their property. They talk more about down near Ammondale and so on, because if you notice, they've actually gotten some movement there. So I think it's important that for this property, the strip matter property, I think we want to be on the leading edge as opposed to hind edge. I truly mean that. Because I, what'd you say, 25 years, Carl? At least 25 years. Mike Maloney once said, I stopped Conterra. I said, Mike, you stopped nothing. All you did was you delayed it, and if you don't have the road system in place, you're going to hurt yourself. And again, I think that this is, this is, it's good to move forward. We're actually looking at both pieces here, is that correct, Fred?
Yes.
We're looking at the conceptual for the west side and the map amendment for the rezoning, correct?
Correct.
It just makes good business sense.
I agree.
And to allow them to get going, I mean, the hotel is a big piece of this, too. Be the first hotel over in that area on that side of 95, and it's important. It'll be visible. I keep saying it'll be visible from 95. So again, I'm all in favor of this, Mr. President.
Great. Councilman Ricks?
I'm in favor of it as well, and I would go one step further in, because of the fact that Conterra has not included us in their thinking and their projections and the other important parts of development that include neighbors, which I think we've always done. I think we ought to go on record as to saying to them, you owe strip matter sound barriers. You owe them the things that you're going to create that's going to affect their property because we didn't know, they didn't know, what those things were. And whether we can do anything about it, it's unforeseen, but I think the statement ought to be said.
And I think as the development progresses, that for a while may be dialogue that we would have.
And maybe that, it shouldn't be maybe just limited to that. It should be limited to what other, other effects they may cause to this piece of property that will ultimately affect the rights of those people to enjoy the land that they're going to own.
And I think Carl's comment regarding having a presentation for this council regarding the Conterra project is overdue. It's certainly overdue, so I think we'll move aggressively to try to get that arranged. Any other comments, Council?
No comment.
Councilwoman Nicholas?
Well, I'm very excited about the property. It's going to be nice to have a really nice hotel here. So I will just continue to watch as it develops.
Thank you.
Mr. President, with your permission, yeah, what we were doing was, we were reacting to, obviously as a referral agency, Park and Planning, the county, they all get referrals in this. So the response back was where we learned, where they were basically telling us this. So with your permission, what I will do is I will respond to the Planning Director of Prince George's County, relate to the council's discussion, and invite, because I pretty much know who she's going to, Mr. Masog, who is a veteran transportation planner with Prince George's County, up to, to brief you.
Okay, all right. Comments, Councilwoman McCray?
Thank you. Carl, staff recommendations tomorrow, you said?
Staff reports in the morning, yeah, they're, just need to be.
Some point, okay.
Yeah, they went out to the Planning Commission this afternoon, so.
Okay. And the Park and Planning, you clarified, that's county that's coming up to present?
Well, I mean, we would give them the option, but I mean, the origin of the comments was the Transportation Division of the Park and Planning Commission, yes.
Okay. And the Conti interchange, the screen with the purple on there, where will that swing through in relation to that and that one entrance? Keep that on the same screen?
I'm sorry. That's a hotel. In fact, that's one of the small concerns we continue to have, and that is that the West Side Boulevard kind of terminates at a traffic circle, which happens to be the entrance point to a gated apartment community. There continues to be concern about that road continuing down, not necessarily as four lanes, but certainly a wider avenue down to the hotel. We're still working on that one.
Councilman Les mentioned leading edge, and that's pretty much word for word what the Planning Commission also suggested to the applicant that we want to get this project moving, and they absolutely agree that so do they. So I think we're all on the same page. Mayor Mo?
Mr. President, likewise, I would like the Public Safety Committee to be plugged into this process.
I knew you would.
Did you make him chairman of that committee?
Yes, sir, I did.
Let me, just for the, for the record, because I don't, you know, throughout the years, the Gould family's been very good to the city, but more importantly, we've had some dialogue with them. Has it been everything what we want? No. The school has a representative here tonight as well that's always sitting in, keeping an eye out. I had the opportunity to talk to Caleb Gould the other night again about roads in that area. So I just didn't want it to, everyone to think that they have not been upfront and talking to the city. We have not been a neutral part of some of the discussions between the county and the Gould family and others, but I did want to at least make that note for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. So that covers Agenda Item Six and Seven. Agenda Item Eight is consideration of a recommendation for a water upgrade at the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility. Good evening, Mr. Lottsky.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Council?
You should have before you a memorandum dated January 9, 2013, and it should state Water Upgrade Maintenance Facility. This is a revised version. What we're trying to do here is provide a upgraded water service to the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility and the new storage facility to the rear of the property, so we're able to provide fully fire sprinkler systems to both these facilities. We currently have a one-inch line coming off Old Sandy Spring Road. WSSC and our fire sprinkler consultant has told us we need a four-inch line enabled to do everything we would like to do. So we contracted with KCI engineers to provide the necessary, necessary plans that WSSC requires to approve. They have done that. Basically, the scope of work includes tapping into the 24-inch main with a four-inch water service to each of the facilities. WSSC is, has a list of contractors that are approved to do their work, to tap into their lines, and we brought three of them out to look at the plans. So once we do this work, we'll have a qualified plumber hook the lines, which will be within five feet of both facility, to bring them into the maintenance facility and the storage building. And then we'll bring out, or ask some fire sprinkler companies to give us some quotes on the sprinkler in both of the facilities. So with that said, the revision here is basically we removed the permanent paving, which would be required on Old Sandy Spring Road once the excavation is done to the 24-inch main. And the thought there is that Public Works or their current street contractor could help us out with doing that permanent paving. So that being said, the quotes are, from HTI contractors in Finksburg, Maryland, was $74,700. City contractors out of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, was $78,950. And Joseph Canova and Son out of Laurel, Maryland, was $85,755. Funding is available in the current CIP under the project titled Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility. At this time, I'd like to recommend that we approve the contract or the proposal from HTI contractors for $74,700.
Thank you, Mr. Lottsky. I'll just ask a quick question to kick things off. What's the anticipated timeframe for this kind of a project? How long does it take generally?
I think it's probably a couple-week project once they get started. Yeah, once they get started.
The sun is going to be 70 degrees.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Comments, questions? Councilwoman Nicholas?
So for the fire sprinkler contractor, how will you advertise for that contractor?
We'll do the same thing. We'll look at our bidders list. We'll prepare some plans that'll be able to go out to show them what we want to do. They'll have to come out and take a look at both facilities, and then we'll go from there and probably bring it back before this council.
And then you also mentioned that a plumber is going to be needed, too. Is there a plumber that you all already have, or you were advertised for that, too?
We'll probably advertise for that. We have somebody that's done a lot of work with us in the facility over the course of the last year. He's kind of looked at it and told us exactly what we're going to have to do. So we're going to use his expertise to at least prepare the plans to move forward on proposals.
Okay. Now, with the SSC-approved vendors, is this something that you all, the city has done before in terms of going to their vendors list?
Not, I believe Public Works has, yes, for work, but no, this is, this is my first time in dealing with WSSC in any kind of project like this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman McCray?
I'm fine with this.
Councilman Les?
Just to clarify, what we're paying for is that, we're paying for a single four-inch tap or two four-inch taps?
A single four-inch tap.
Okay, and then it'll be split off to two four-inch feeds, one to each building?
Right, we'll come up the, come up the west side of the building.
Right.
They'll bring it within five feet of the current warehouse, I'll call, and then run it back to the, within five feet of the storage.
So a large part of this cost is actually paying WSSC for the tap?
Well, and we got to abandon our existing tap.
No.
We have to abandon the old tap at the Kaiser property, which we just capped. So yes, there's, there's a lot of fees involved in there.
Okay, two W, actually, it's passed through the, to WSSC, unfortunately. Okay, thank you. I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
Councilman Ricks?
What kind of a municipal discount do we get from WSSC?
$10.
I think Mayor Mo could answer that one.
That $10 you donated, we can go ahead.
What $10?
For your telephone.
My phone didn't go off.
Twice.
It did not.
Five bucks a pop.
It was just a vibration. You just heard it.
So if councils agree, then we'll award this at the mayor and council meeting on January 14th. Agenda Item Nine is Resolution Number 1-13, a resolution to amend Resolution Number 2-01 to change the composition of the membership of the Laurel Youth Advisory Council and to make certain technical and organizational changes to the text of the resolution. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll kind of start off again, let Bob, if he has anything. We reviewed the, as you know, the youth advisory's been kind of defunct for a while. We made a commitment several months ago to several of the members of the community that we would try to engage, and this is part of our overall plan of, it will be announced on Monday regarding getting the community involved. I think the youth advisory, what we tried to do is make some changes to terms, made a few changes to the appointment process. We also put, took off the council members and put on some individuals that have talked to me that are interested in being part of it. The reports, everything else still comes back to the, to the mayor and city council on a yearly, and it talks about projects and those types of things. And with that said, I'll answer any questions or if Bob's got anything further. It really just is trying to get this re-instituted. We have a meeting set up, I think, in a week or so with one of the local ministers, as well as Judge Nichols and a few others to talk about some of this as well. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Councilwoman Nicholas?
Well, I'm very glad to see this. Most of you may know that I do a lot of work in the community with the youth, so this is going to be good. I think it's going to be very informative as I read. We have students from the high schools involved, and I think that'll be very good communication for us, for the city. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Ricks?
No questions.
Councilwoman McCray?
Good idea. Glad to see it get going again.
Councilman Les?
Just, I'll ask, we dare look, if I didn't ask. Under E, two members should be students attending. I'll ask Debbie Chang to say Vincent Pilati High School.
That's actually.
You're going to delete that?
All the school references, we tried to delete.
There'll be no reference to Laurel High School or?
No, that's why I wanted to make sure. We had the schools. It caused some issues of trying to get them, and it doesn't give a, in my view, you know, there's, I think that could be part of the problem where, you know, during school, we were getting some names, and then sometimes you weren't. I'd rather just let the council go out and others and put some information out there and try to get some kids that are really involved, you know, the other adults.
Thank you, Mayor.
Makes sense.
I can certainly applaud the mayor for putting this on as the former chair of the Youth Advisory Council. I can attest to how difficult it was to particularly going to high schools and getting either guidance counselors, principals, and such involved with recruiting students, and you ended up with, oftentimes, we ended up with kids who had so many other things on their plate that they began to wane from their involvement with it. So I'm in full support of this, definitely. Ms. Rowland's ready to go, so apparently our agenda's complete. Apparently, our agenda is done. If there are no more, no more businesses come before this work session, we are adjourned.